Good evening. There's a joint meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to discuss Old Colony. We've had a series of meetings. There's still some questions that the Finance Committee wanted to have answered prior to the November 18th vote. So with that said, is there a motion to open up the joint meeting of Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee? So will we say them? You're in.
Yes. Thank you for everyone for coming tonight. The Finance Committee requested this third and final meeting before the vote next Tuesday because we felt it was important for our residents to get more information out there for everyone and to answer any questions that are unanswered, basically. I've seen some commentary on social media and there just seems to be some inaccuracies. So hopefully with today's meeting, you can answer a lot of those and it'll help all you out when you make a decision. So with that being said, do I have a motion to open the Finance Committee?
A motion?
Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll turn it over to the Old Colony crew, but there's some folks in the audience who may not know us, so we'll just go around the horn and introduce ourselves. Selectmen Kevin Gaskell, David Wollnarr, Board of Selectmen.
Selectman Bob Henley.
Mike Boucher, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Keith Knight, Finance Committee.
Lisa Tomlinson, Finance Committee.
Eric Chu, Finance Committee.
Eric McGlynn, Finance Committee.
Bob Saint Jean, Finance Committee.
Sarah Grifitham, Business Manager for Old Colony.
Paul Shirley-Godden, School Committee Member from Rochester, and currently serving as the Chair of the Building.
Daniel Polanski, Superintendent Director of Old Colony.
Nicole, with PMA Consultants, with a large question.
Jack Critton, also a PMA Consultant.
Mark Medrin, also a PMA.
Malta Hartley, also a PMA.
Great. We'll turn it over to Aaron.
Our plan today was to share a quick overview and video so that anybody who has not seen...
Grab the mic, Aaron. I think the people who...
Our plan today is to share a quick video overview for anybody who has not yet seen an informational video. It's about a 11-minute debrief on the project. We'll follow that up with an update on the cost of repair. We'll then speak to the operating budget and then we would open the floor to Q and A. So we'll start with the video.
Old Colony is not just an educational institution for our five-member towns, we're a partner in service in labor market solution and a destination for many to take advantage of a community-focused outreach that happens each and every day. Old Colony students have been responsible for projects like the construction of the COA shed and installation of electric car stations in Acushnet, the Carver Junior Senior High concession stand, construction of Loon Pond Lodge and Ted Williams Park in Lakeville, renovation of the American Legion Holy Ghost Grounds and Dunseeth Gardens in Matta Poyset, and construction of the COA shed, work at Plum Library, and the upcoming addition to the Rochester Council on Aging, to name only a few. With the addition of a plumbing and HVAC program, Old Colony will become a fully operational construction outfit with direct additional benefit for our communities and taxpayers. In this video, we'll show the opportunity we have to secure more than $125 million in state funds through the MSBA to fund the project. We'll review how we got here by reviewing the steps we've completed in the MSBA process. And we'll detail the project scope and budget for the new high school, including the amount that would be financed on our local tax rolls. We'll detail the project's scope and budget for the new high school, including the amount that would be financed on our local tax rolls. And we'll explain a key step in the MSBA process: community authorization by our five-member towns. Old Colony and its member communities have a rare opportunity to fund a new vocational technical high school with the MSBA. The MSBA is a state authority that helps local school districts pay for the design and construction of schools. For every dollar spent, one penny of our state sales tax goes to the MSBA, and it's funded more than $17 billion in statewide school construction since 2004. The program is highly competitive. Only about 15% of school districts that apply are accepted into the program each year. Old Colony was accepted into the program in March 2022 and has spent the past three years meeting MSBA requirements, hiring a project team, and gathering public feedback. The MSBA process is rigorous, but ensures that our project not only meets the highest standards in 21st century vocational technical education in the most fiscally responsible solution. The payoff for this work is significant. By completing the MSBA process, Old Colony can have about 55% of its eligible costs reimbursed by the MSBA and another 5.7% paid through incentive points for maintenance, efficiency, and sustainability. Meanwhile, the cost of repair and renovation of the existing 50-year-old building with no additional programming and no expanded enrollment estimates to more than $130 million on longer timelines and with no reimbursement from the MSBA. Here's how the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School got to where we will ask our communities for authorization in special elections in our five towns on November 18th. The school was selected in the highly competitive MSBA core program in March 2022 because the existing school building has reached the end of its useful life. Opened in 1975, the building celebrated its 50th year in service this year. And despite incredible maintenance efforts to keep the building in good working condition, the building's size, design, and space no longer serves the needs associated with the 21st century vocational education. With significant space constraints for existing programs that do not match enrollment demand, do not provide room for vital student supports, nor room to expand vocational offerings like HVAC, plumbing, and dental assisting, which are in high demand in our communities. To begin the process, Old Colony School Building Committee, consisting of school and town leaders and resident volunteers, conducted a feasibility study, hired a project team which includes an owner's project manager and architectural design firm, and embarked on a comprehensive effort to hear from the community through informational sessions, focus groups, and, most importantly, an educational visioning process where anyone in our communities, including our students, could help capture the needs a new Old Colony should serve. Our School Building Committee took all of this feedback to create an educational plan, which directed the design team to create several options of renovation, addition, and replacement of the high school. The project team presented 40 different scenarios to evaluate, which the School Building Committee evaluated with a detailed scoring system to identify the most financially responsible solution, which supports Old Colony's long-term educational goals. The School Building Committee identified eight options for the project team to develop further, including various options of repair, renovation, addition, and new construction. And in December 2024, the School Building Committee selected a new construction option for 776 students as its preferred option to build an entirely new building adjacent to the existing school. Here's how our design team took months of planning, public feedback, and guidance from our School Building Committee to design and scope out every inch of a new Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School. The new two-story building will measure approximately 270,000 square feet, located adjacent to the existing school building. This minimizes disruption to school activities during the construction period and saves time, money, and resources that a phased-in construction would require. The building is laid out in four main wings, arrayed around a central hub, the heart of the school. The gymnasium anchors the health and wellness wing, which will also house new science labs, our Health Careers Program, and a new dental assisting program on the second floor. The wing south and west converges with this one to provide a complete offering of publicly accessible spaces, including the auditorium and cafeteria, hubbed with the culinary program, along with cosmetology and business on the first floor, with graphics, computer science, architecture and engineering, and electronics on the second floor in close proximity to the media center. On the opposite side of the site layout, automotive, machine and tool, and metal fabrication are located in the southeast wing and share a working courtyard with their neighboring wing to the north, which hosts the construction cluster, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and carpentry. Academic classrooms are located throughout, including a dedicated music space and room for breakout sessions, counseling, and integrated special education. With room for 776 students, this expanded capacity provides a more equitable way to meet demand for in-demand vocational programs and meets the key educational goals and objectives reflected from our communities through visioning and our School Building Committee's educational plan: promoting, personalization, connection, and ownership; a culture of learning; vocational learning that happens in clusters; school as a community resource; a secure and welcoming place; adaptability and sustainability in design; and both indoor and outdoor learning. Here's the project's scope and budget for a new Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School under the MSBA process. The total project budget is approximately $288.7 million. This includes careful contingency planning for rising costs and demolition of the existing building, which will be converted into additional parking space. With community authorization, the MSBA would contribute about $129 million to this budget, or about 60.5% of eligible project costs. In addition to Old Colony's base reimbursement rate from the MSBA, the project will get another $11 million in Mass Save rebates and IRA tax credits, leaving about $148 million to be financed on the local tax rolls of our member communities, distributed between the towns based on annual enrollment data. Here's how we propose to pay for our portion: a debt exclusion, which means the tax increases temporary and expires once the bond is paid off; a 30-year bond using a conservative interest rate of 4%. This is a fixed amount until the bond is repaid. You can see the average single-family assessed home value in each of our five towns to see the average annual tax impact, or use the Tax Impact Calculator on our project website to input your home's value and estimated tax impact. The MSBA process only moves forward with community authorization from our five towns. However, the results are not five separate elections. This is one aggregated vote where a simple majority would approve the project and its funding. Community authorization moves the high school project to the next phase: a year of design development and construction documentation, then bidding and construction, with the goal of cutting the ribbon and occupying the new school in the fall of 2029. The MSBA process ends without community authorization. It may only schedule another vote with the MSBA's approval. Otherwise, the MSBA's involvement would cease, and any future MSBA involvement on a future project or repair effort would require the filing of a new statement of interest by Old Colony. We would go back to the beginning of the process if and when the MSBA accepts us back into the program, which is historically a five-to-10-year process. Without the MSBA, Old Colony will have to address the repair and renovation of the Vocational Technical High School through its regular capital improvement processes, where taxpayers in our five communities pay the full cost without state assistance. We estimate base repair and code improvements to the existing high school at $134.3 billion. 100% of these expenses would have to be paid with local tax dollars. The cost of maintaining the school would continue to rise and would not address any of the existing space issues at the school, nor provide capacity to open new vocational programs. At Old Colony, our project vision for a new high school is to foster opportunities for integrated vocational and academic learning in a modernized facility that's designed to maximize student voice, independence, and exploration. We've compiled every design detail and document, as well as a tax impact calculator for you to review on our project website.
So one of the questions that arose recently online and through the ThinkCom was around what are the implications of a no vote and what are the costs associated with that? One of the things I've asked Chad Critton didn't speak to is code triggers and also the differential between what happens with a vote in favor of a new high school and then a vote if there's a no in terms of the aggregate. So I'll turn it over to Chad. He can talk about triggers and also the difference between the outcomes.
Thank you. So the slide that you have up here, I think this group has seen this particular slide before. This is really a choice on November 18th, whether we move forward with the MSBA or go at it without the MSBA. That building may have another couple of years, may have five years, may have 10 years. Really, nobody knows exactly when there's going to be a major issue in the building, like we know the understop plumbing is starting to fail. If that lets go, that's a major issue and we're going to be throwing right into code repairs. What those triggers are based on is the building's assessed value. So this is the current property card. The assessed value is just over $17 million. So there are a number of code triggers. The first code trigger that you hit that sort of starts that chain reaction is 521 CMR. So that's the accessibility code, Massachusetts regulation. And what that says is that any renovation costing 30% or more than the assessed value, or that we just saw on the prior screen, actually toward the bottom of that screen, $5.1 million triggers full compliance with 521 CMR. Doesn't sound too bad until you really start to think about what compliance with 521 CMR entails, its accessibility. So you're talking things like wheelchair turning radius. So bathrooms in that building, you saw the pictures in a prior presentation, are very, very small. There is no wheelchair turning radius. So when you need to expand that bathroom, you're taking space away from whatever adjacent space is, if you're even allowed to move that wall when it's not load-bearing. That's one of the issues, push-pulls on the doors, a whole host of accessibility problems that you need to address in that building that are really going to take their already constrained footprint and constrain it even more, as you're going to lose real estate within that building in order to address those 521 CMR issues there. Beyond that, so once you impact more than 50% of the floor area or 33% of the floor area, you trigger 148 CMR, which is the requirement for fire protection. There are no sprinklers in that building right now. It's also served by a single private well. You cannot push enough water from a private well into the fire protection system. Also, that means you're looking at a cistern underground, roughly 40,000 gallons. You need a fire pump. You need the power service to feed that fire pump. Structural upgrades are another big challenge. When that building was designed, sheer seismic codes and snow loads are not what they are today. So in order to bring that building up to those current codes under 780 CMR, you're looking at things like seismic cliffs, you're looking at bracing, so when you see giant structural lexus going through a space. You don't necessarily have full control over where those things land by the structural engineer's calculations. If that lands in the middle of a shop, you just cost yourself a little more real estate. Dealing with snow loads, I mean, this is something that we have done on MSBA projects in the past. Typically, what that means, we did one in Rochester, it was cistering up every single joist in the area. Somerville High School was actually a replacement of the joist. That was a newer building. That was an 80s building. A structural engineer said, rather than cistering, you're going to pull the joist out one at a time, stabilize the building, and swap it out with a joist that meets the current snow load environments. So that is the code trigger, the chain reaction that happens. It all starts with 521 CMR when you hit that $5 million and 30% of assessed, and you start to roll into some other ones.
Question on the triggers. Is that based on a single issue or is it an aggregate issue over a certain time period?
It's over a three-year period.
So you can't have improvements or repairs over 33% of the $17 million assessed value in a three-year period?
Correct. Yep. So that would be the challenge on the repair. We get the question. And it makes sense. It's a good question. Why can't we just repair problems as they come up at some point? I mean, again, the water tank, if you're going to trigger it, probably not. When you're chasing underground, under the slab plumbing, you're probably going to trigger at that point, because that is one of those things that just tends to spiral. We also look, because we're getting a question a lot, so code triggers aside, let's pretend 521 CMR and 780 CMR don't exist. Would it make sense at that point? So it's not a viable solution because it doesn't follow the regulations as you'd be ignoring those triggers. But we said, okay, let's run the numbers. Let's say we got a repair estimate, $134 million, and today's wanting to bring that entire building up to current codes and standards. So we said, okay, let's run a scenario where we do 10% of that work every five years and find out where the break-even is. How far in the future do you go doing 10% every five years before you have now spent more than you would have spent on a new building or the bond of the new building? So you can see that graph up here. So the curved line, the curved red line, is that repair cost. Those are the five-year intervals. We have an escalator in here that's 4% annual. That's right around what the national is. In Massachusetts, especially in the K-12 MSBA market, the number is more than double that. If you go back, the MSBA has lots of data on this, so you can go back to 2007 and see their cost per square foot. We've really been chasing these numbers with each project year by year. I mean, at some point, hopefully it levels off, but it has not in the past, and we see no signs of that at the moment in the future. So the green line that you see there is the district share for replacement of that building. So those are level-funded debt over a 30-year period that add up to the $148 million, which is the value after IRA 2022 and Mass Save rebates. So if you look 30 years out in the future, so 2056 or so, and say, okay, that 10% chunks doing every five years, how much did you spend by the time you got to the point where your new building would have been paid off 30 years in the future? And the answer to that was $182 million. And at that point, you've only addressed 70% of your building's needs. So you still have 30% of what's known today. This is 30 years in the future, so you're going to have more things pop up that compound onto that. But based on what we know today, you'll still have 30% of your needs unaddressed 30 years in the future, and you'll have spent $182 million for a district share versus $147, $148 million with the MSBA support. I think that's... Open up to any questions. That's the repair component and the trigger component. I'm pretty sure a lot of information, so happy to answer any questions you have.
The fixed debt from the debt exclusion, that's going to be a fluid number, correct, based on student enrollment per year?
Town by town, yes. So the school would pull a bond, so they'll pull a 30-year bond, and then the district assessment for each of the five member communities would vary based on actual enrollment over that period. That's recalculated every year. So whether the principal interest payment is for that year, it gets recalculated based on the current enrollment data.
Do we have any predictive numbers as far as what we can expect for enrollment for our town? Because I mean, we send most of the kids now, I think it's 35%.
So Doc, I can tell you that currently Acushnet... I'm sorry. Currently, Acushnet has over 200 students enrolled at Old Colony. With the lottery and the allocations in the town-by-town lottery that will come forward using historical and predictive data, I would foresee that the Acushnet population will be between 40 and 50 students a year. If I had to predict, then I would anticipate between 40 and 50 students per year. So that could be a small decrease.
Per class, correct?
Yep, per year, per class.
This is not 50 students all total.
Right, so the aggregate would be between 160 and 200 students, somewhere in that ballpark. But I would predict that's what we would be looking at, which is somewhat close to where we're currently at, but it could be a small decrease. Because the predictive data for our different towns is indicative of the fact that Lakeville currently has predictive data in terms of the aggregate proportion of the eighth-grade class that is higher than the data from the other towns. That's just the reality.
Follow-up to that. I believe last year, your FY '26 total operating expenses were around $15 million. Is that correct?
No, that's accurate.
Could you anticipate what your FY '30 total operating expenses would look like?
Let me hand him like that to Chad, because we went through an exercise that we think will be helpful.
So what you see up here, these numbers are... There we go. These numbers are the after-revenue, so after Chapter 70 and Chapter 71 state aid. So the district's operating costs were 15, but they had state aid that reduced the burden to each of the member communities. So FY '26, the operating budget was around $9.9 million after revenue, so Chapter 70, Chapter 71 aid. We forecasted that out through FY '30, which is the completion of the new building, but it's not really the best point to look at because they're not at full enrollment. When they go from FY '55 today to FY '76 in the future, it's going to be one class at a time. So it's going to be broken out into one quarter, spread out of four years. So you can see those numbers in the bottom here, starting at FY '31 is the first freshman incoming class, '32, '33, and then by FY '34, you're at your full FY '76 capacity. So we ran those numbers with and without aid. When we ran those numbers before state aid, it translated to a 14.78% increase over the status quo condition. When we ran the numbers with aid, the increase dropped to 6.04%. So the other piece of this that is... It's not very easy to explain because we're trying to compare tomorrow's dollars against today's. So today, we're $9.9 million, but even if nothing happens, if nothing is expanded or the school stays exactly as it is, we know from past history, you're looking at roughly 3% annual increase. So we did map that out in the red bars and we said, okay, 3% annual through FY '34, what does that equal? And then we took the budget projection that came from the school's business office and put those two side by side. So if you go to the far right of this right here, that 6.04% delta is that side by side. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, just to follow with that, I believe last year's increase was around 4%. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Close, close to that?
Just under 40. 3.73, and then minus, if you take away the insurance, which was a big piece of that, because we pay our own insurance, that's a really important piece to consider.
So it was about $400,000 increase to our annual assessment, and that's where I'm going with this, is because as a Finance Committee person, my main concern is not just with the debt exclusion, which is the big headline, right? It's more about for us on the Finance Committee, the annual operating expenses and how that's going to impact all of our budgets in town. And it's trouble, it's troublesome. I'm just going to be honest. It's very worrisome for me as far as where are we going to get this extra money to fund all this? Last year was very tight, the year before that was, this coming year is going to be tight again. I'm just afraid that we're going to get to the point where two years from now, let's say this passes, two years from now, we're going to be asking, have to ask our residents for a proposition two-and-a-half tax override to fund our operational budget, and that's very concerning to me. And this is... I'm putting this all out there because this is reality. I mean, this could potentially happen. We don't know if it's going to, but realistically, I mean, it's... We're faced next year with a potential of a $200,000 to $300,000 increase in health insurance, $100,000 increase in pensions.
This line is a function of the Acushnet overall, so if you want us to speak to that, we could.
And the other thing is where our main revenue source comes from our property tax owners. You know, we're 88% dependent on our property tax owners, and I'm just concerned that we might put too much on the balance of them.
So if I can ask a follow-up, because Dr. Boucher's question is based on the concern with financing a new school. But if we look at the fact that we're going to have increased costs regardless, because the repairs are going to kick in, and best-case scenario is we don't hit one of those triggers, but realistically, one of those triggers is going to hit, which is going to precipitate a huge demand for repair that needs to get done in order for the school to be able to stay open. So if we're sitting looking at that and we're looking at what the costs are, and best-case scenario, you guys mapped it out, and it isn't too long that's out there, we're going to have increased tax demands regardless of whether or not we vote in a new school. So then the question that comes up to me is, if we're looking at roughly an $8 million difference in the overall cost today dollars for doing a new school versus the best-case scenario for repair costs, that almost seems like a no-brainer to me, because the school, the new building, can be covered not only with state aid, but with a bond, where if we wait and we deal with actual repair costs that are in there, now we're looking at Prop two-and-a-half overrides just to take care of a repair, or we're gutting our town resources if that even covers the cost that the school's going to run.
So, well, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, so that's incorrect. If you did a repair, if the new school failed and you did a repair, no matter what, the school would have to look at whatever the repair cost is, and I think this gentleman said something about, you know, $5 million over how many years did you say you can't exceed?
Three years.
So you can do $4 million every three years, and that would be okay?
Yeah, it is. I'm rolling three years.
So it would be every roll in three years. So if you did, if the school said, hey, if this all fails, from all five municipalities ever fails, and the school says, we now need $4 million to do X, Y, Z, then we would go for a debt exclusion, not a Prop two-and-a-half override.
Right, but we run into the same thing. That's not approved.
You would do a debt exclusion regardless. The override that Mr. Boucher's talking about is what I talked about in the September 9th meeting. It's an automatic force override because of the operating budget. But regardless of anything that you do, you would have to do a debt exclusion, the $4 million box over five, 10 years, and then if you happen to have that reason for another $4 million box in year four or five, that do it. four million bucks in year four or five to do it again, you'd be faced with that again before your first one's paid off. So you'd have to do that, that bond rating coming across. Right now, currently as it exists, if it's one hundred and fifty million dollars total for the school, a new school, or a third of the school with fifty million dollars, I ran the numbers on that, the town of Akushnet would pay back thirty-six million dollars in interest on that fifty million dollars over thirty years, based on their projection of four percent thirty years. And I did that through our bonding company. So it's eighty-six million dollars. So I mean, this, you, they can't sit here, I can't sit here, nobody can sit here and say, we're getting a new school. I mean, I think if the vote fails from the five district towns, I think that's a conversation that all five member towns are gonna go back to the table with Old Colony and say, what is it, that's your immediate needs and how much is that cost, right? And then the only smart way to go about doing that is to stay below that parameter of the other three years and the five million bucks, whatever it may be, and you just hit out the, the big punch list that you would need to do to keep the school afloat, right? That's the only other option you have, other than wait the five years or ten years, whatever. Mr. Blinsey, you said something, if it, we don't get the MSBA, this time you have to wait, there's a waiting period of at least five years to go back for refunding, for MSBA to reconsider?
Yeah, so, so we've seen, we've seen historically when schools, um, don't receive their funding authorization in the MSBA pipeline, uh, the MSBA will generally move that, remove that school from the pipeline, free up those funds for the next community in need. Uh, this past year, there are over a hundred and twenty statements of interest from the MSBA, uh, so your chances of getting back in are roughly fifteen percent. The other catch with the MSBA is Carver saw, um, with their first go-around with their project, if and when you do get the re-invite in Carver's case, I think it was seven years, uh, from the time they were moved, uh, the MSBA does not participate in the feasibility study cost for that second time. So as of right now, they've been reimbursing Old Colony for all the feasibility for Carver, when they had to do it again, it was up one hundred percent on the district. Uh, so that would certainly be something to contend with the second time.
Mike, can I get, you know, as a finance chair, you're, you're asking all the right questions, but I think, you know, it's, it's highly speculative to just assume that, um, a proposition two and a half override is needed to fund a budget down the road, right? While it's an option, the other option of the finance committee and the town leaders who happen to be in that seat in twenty thirty or twenty thirty-one is to examine what services are being provided to the residents, right? We've got a K through eight school district, so it'd be an examination of that school budget or other services. And I think sometimes we throw around proposition two and a half override is, again, highly speculative. There's a process to just assume that that's the, the direction that the town will go with. But David, it still, it still worries me because last year, we started off the budget process with about eight hundred thousand dollars to work with. And you saw where our, our schools started off at, right? And they, they had to reduce significantly. So our, our elementary and middle schools take up sixty percent of our, of our overall town's budget. So that doesn't leave much else for all the other town departments, police, fire, EMS. I mean, we have to think about all those other departments in town, not, not just our school. But, but I, I think, Mike, the greater conversation then becomes, as Akushnet looking at, is looking at a K through twelve district. I mean, I'm looking at Pete's tattoo, it says nomad.
Yeah.
Our kids are nomads, right? Like, they don't have a home, they, you know, we tuition them out to Fahaven, we've got a fortunate, that we have Old Colony, some off to New Bedford, and there's an expense to that, it's generational, right? And so, well, it may, might make good business sense, but at some point, I think the town is gonna have to really examine how we're approaching nine through twelve. And that conversation, I think, is gonna be a larger one that needs to be, that needs to happen. I agree. This project may be the catalyst for that, but, you know, I, I got calls all weekend long from parents who are rightfully very concerned that they don't know where their kids are gonna be going to school, eighth-grade parents who have no idea where their kids are gonna be going to school next year.
David, can I just real quick?
No, I just wanna finish, I just wanna make my point. The one constant that I've heard is they're like, you know what, at least I know my kids can go to OC, right? And so I just think there's a, a larger conversation that needs to, needs to take place as a town on how we approach K through twelve.
David, can I ask a quick question? What does the lottery do to affect our chances of our kids getting in? Like, what, what was the percentage? I know my son tells me almost everyone went to OC, but how many kids in Akushnet graduated eighth grade, what number went to you?
So the last three years, the average number of students were ten in Old Colony, from, um, twelve Akushnet was fifty-five students.
Each year?
Yeah.
Out of a total of how many?
Uh, the class sizes varied, I just have, I happen to have the average for the last three years because it's hard.
I think it's right around a hundred, a hundred and ten, I know my, my kids in juniors, their class was a hundred and ten.
Some classes, some classes have been as small as ninety-three or eighty.
Now with the lottery though, what does that do to our fifty-five students?
That number will drop.
Where we don't have a high school though, what happens?
Correct, so, so based on the formula created, the predictive and the historical, I would anticipate that, that number will be reduced until there's an opportunity to open the door to more students because of the historical and predictive data combined. There's pros and cons to that. The cons are, we would like to be able to service as many students as possible, right? That's real. Um, for the town where there's a fiscal challenge, it costs less money for the town if there are fewer students attending. But that, that means less money for Old Colony, it doesn't mean that you're not paying for students to attend somewhere, do you know what I mean? It's like a catch-22, because they are going somewhere. And to Pete's point, when he spoke earlier, first of all, there's no wrong answers, everybody at the table is making very valid points, there's not a wrong answer here, it's just, there's different ways of viewing this. I have a daughter who's seventeen, and I was talking to Pete outside, uh, she, oh, to Eric, notice Eric and Pete came over and started speaking with us, right? Um, but I have a daughter who's seventeen, she said, Dad, I wanna buy a car. It's forty-five hundred dollars and it's two hundred twenty thousand miles on it. And I shook my head, and I said, I found you a minivan that has ninety thousand, ninety thousand miles on it, and it's forty-five hundred dollars. And she said, I don't wanna drive a minivan. And I said to her, the minivan will last longer, it's a better investment. Pete's point is, is exactly the point I just made, and that is, the school's fifty years old, we could absolutely make, um, repairs to it. We could, and it might last another fifteen years, and we'd be okay, but it wouldn't be ideal, but we wouldn't be adding programs and the state will contribute to that. Or if you build a new high school, obviously the longevity of that high school is much more significant, and I think the fiscal investment is a better investment in the long term. The cost differential is real, but it is not so significant that hopefully it will be manageable, especially with the point you just made about the lottery. However, there are real implications to Doc's point. So I just offer that, it's not necessarily that there's a right or a wrong in terms of what the answer is, and it's up to the taxpayers to decide what's right or wrong for them. It's just that there's different ways of looking at this, and the way that I'm, the, the way that the building committee has been presented the information is such that a new high school is a strong investment, that will last longer, allow us growth, and the addition of three programs. But there are implications for a yes and a no, regardless of which direction the taxpayers choose. Um, and to your point, I would foresee, probably if I had to forecast, a ten-seat decrease as a result of the lottery, at least in the early stages, but that, that again is not concrete. So it all depends on the forecast in terms of what the K through twelve predictive data tells us. Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay, sorry for the long answer.
Does it, does a decrease in student population equate to a decrease in?
Predictive data.
Akushnet's share of the project and the annual budget?
Yes.
So if Akushnet's numbers drop, that's less money?
Capital is based on annual enrollment, um, at Old Colony, that's ninety percent of the number, K through twelve enrollment is ten percent of the number, that's a safeguard for communities with very low numbers to ensure that there's still a contribution, if that makes sense? Less of an issue with communities that have higher numbers.
Here, just a quick follow-up on the, because we, we saw this on social media, a, a lot of misinformation coming up, and one of it was that Old Colony was instituting a lottery. And could you just address the fact that that is state mandated?
So I will tell you, uh, one hundred percent that is state mandated. I went to the Board of Education on three different dates, you can look up the Board of Education meetings and see my testimony, to speak against a lottery. I am not in it, I am not in favor of a lottery. I understand there are pros and cons, a lottery means every student has an opportunity to be selected, but I also believe very much so that the merit-based system that was created is an incentive for students to focus on certain areas within their control, and at no point was Old Colony ever a disproportionate represented, representation of our member communities. So I will tell you that I have openly advocated for the old system to be maintained, but unsuccessfully.
The last question I have about that, though, all these other towns have high schools, we don't. So they have a choice of going to their own high school, we don't, and we still lose seats even though they have alternative options and we do not?
This, this is true, and our attempt was try, was to try and utilize something with this town-by-town lottery that was as fair as possible. The historical data is kind of the, that's a feather in the cap of Akushnet, so it takes into consideration the historical attendance from Akushnet, because if we use only predictive data, there'd be far fewer seats, does that make sense?
Yes.
So the offset of the historical data kind of speaks to what you just mentioned, it's, it's giving credit where credit is due, like, hey, these kids have, have grown up here, we've been there, I always say, we're Akushnet's high school, right? And I would love to say, hey, we can take as many kids as we possibly can. The reality is, the state has forced our hand in terms of how we can, um, proceed, and I think it's a really difficult place to be, to try and create a formula that will work and then carry over when we, when we look to expand, because that predictive data will assist with expansion.
Quick question, uh, in staying with the lottery questions, uh, just so I understand it, and I'm just gonna use rough numbers, is it, is the lottery drawn by a regional level or the district level? When you say Akushnet has fifty students?
It'll be, it'll be drawn, it, it will be drawn by Old Colony, a third party will come in, they will draw the lottery, and it will be drawn so that if the first, once the quota is created per town?
And that's, and how is that?
We use historical data, which is the average of the last three ninth-grade classes at Old Colony.
Okay.
And we use predictive data, which is the percentage of, let's call it Akushnet's seats.
Okay.
Um, in the eighth grade compared to the aggregate eighth-grade class, we multiply that percentage by the number of students we're accepting, hundred and fifty, and that gives you the percentage of a hundred and fifty for predictive data purposes. They're combined with historical data, and then you get the average of those two numbers, which gives you your quota.
Okay.
Right?
So, uh, it's, it's drawn, and so if you have two hundred students that apply for a freshman? Old Colony draws a hundred and fifty?
Will draw every student so that they know exactly where they are on the waitlist, but if an Akushnet student says, I choose not to attend, that seat is filled with an Akushnet student, it is not in order of the, the waitlist drawn, does that make sense?
Yes.
It will go to the first Akushnet student. If a, if a town does not use all of their seats, what will happen is the available seat will rotate, so one town will take a student, the next time that available seat, uh, seat becomes available, a next town will get that student. And again, we've done that to try and, um, address this gentleman's concern about equal distribution, so that there's not an overdraft for any town. My concern initially was, they told us we couldn't do it town by town. Well, what happens if we draw a hundred and fifty students from Akushnet, what does that do to the budget? You flatten the municipality, that's problematic, you can't do that to a municipality. Better yet, if you draw a hundred and fifty students from Carver, they have no freshman class. So we had to have predictive and historical data to protect, to safeguard against any negative outcome that could have resulted from a lottery, does that make sense? But again, it came as a state mandate, please know, Old Colony advocated strongly to maintain the prior system.
It's just that, in my concern to follow up with Dr. Boucher's comments about, I, I think, you know, as a finance committee, you know, obviously we have to concentrate on Akushnet, and I think we're looking kinda at a perfect storm as far as education is concerned, because our school committee is, is looking at a contract now for conventional high schools, we don't know where that's gonna go, and we've got a problem with our, uh, environmental, uh, in our elementary and our middle school, that that's gonna have to be addressed, and that's all gonna fall, you know, on the property owner and the taxpayers and Akushnet, if this project goes. I mean, if Akushnet turns this project down, it could still go based on the other four communities. So it's a different situation.
Right, to your point, Mr. Blinsey, even to that point, I think, even if it doesn't pass, there's still issues we deal with, to your point, right? So there's still a tax impact. The question is, which is, to Pete's point, is which is a better investment, right? That's one. And then the second piece to keep in mind, and Doc, and Pete, and Eric can attest to this, actually, Mr. St. Jean can too, I think each of them has been present at some point over the last ten years. When we have our budgeting process, every town comes in at least twice to give us feedback around the budget. And so the operational budget is created in conjunction with and in collaboration with our member towns. It's also put out in a line-by-line fashion so that every single member town can look line by line with us and say to us, these are the impacts that we're feeling, tell us what, you know, where you're coming from. And typically, I can tell you, over the past ten years, we've always found a way to get to yes collaboratively, but not without cutting pieces back, and that will continue to happen. So we've always been collaborative in the way that we communicate with our towns. Um, by all means, that's the, that's the goal moving forward, but as we look at this and we evaluate where we wanna be in the future, our question is, where is the most sound investment? And is it in the two hundred and twenty thousand mile engine, or is it in the ninety thousand, uh, mile engine? Right, as the analogy that I used earlier, and I think realistically, adding three programs, expanding capacity for enrollment, right? And putting something down that will last at least fifty years is a far better decision than fifteen years down the road, being a percentage of the way through, um, repairs, right, and kicking the can down the road, because at some point, if it's in fifteen years, we say, we wanna build a new high school, it's gonna be way more than the cost of what we're talking about now. When Kate Cawtack built their high school for a hundred and twenty million dollars and cut the ribbon in two, twenty-one, I sat in front of the Lakeville Select Board and Rich LaCamera said to me, Aaron, you wanna do something like that, it's gonna be over a hundred million dollars, and I said, Rich, that's in today's numbers, it's gonna be way more than that. And after the meeting, he said, hey, you know what I really appreciate? You said it's gonna be way more than that. Right? Because we knew at that time it was gonna be way more than that, because you could see from inflation, there was no way we were doing something for a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars if we were just starting, right, with a meeting that was on December fifth, two thousand nineteen, and our, our Hoogers Day, where we said to all of our member towns, we're gonna be submitting a statement of interest, right? And at that point in time, we gave them a booklet of all of our failing systems and said, here's a bunch of failing systems, we need you to know that between two thousand and nineteen, and whenever this thing goes, we're not putting for, in for any capital in these areas, because it would be a frivolous use of taxpayer money. We just couldn't, we, if the system failed, we'd have to go for an emergency, you know, an ask, but we weren't willing to put money into that if we knew that there was a chance we might have a new building and we wouldn't have to expend those costs. So please know that capital projects since two thousand and nineteen have absolutely been put on hold out of respect for where this process could lead us.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim?
Yeah?
Just to, uh, kind of jump back into that point, you currently have, I mean, you, you have capital expenses added to your budget every year, do you still have, do you have, I know we talked about stabilization last year, what do you currently have in your so-called coffers for capital expenses?
Sorry, I just wanna pull up the, hi, I just wanna pull up the report, but, um, I wanted to make a comment about the burden on Akushnet, because if you pull the chapter seventy spreadsheet for the town of Akushnet, the town's required contribution towards education increased last year by six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So if you're talking about having seven hundred thousand available, and the state is saying you have to contribute six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars additional, and additional to, to all of your schools, I have your locals of Akushnet, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, Old Colony was two hundred and ten thousand, so that's, that's wild, because you have eleven hundred students and you are local, and you had last year, um, one hundred and you have eleven-hundred students and you are local, and you had last year one-hundred-and-ninety-four students at Old Colony. So DESI is saying that is your required minimum local contribution towards education. And I know as a school district, when we sit and have these conversations at Budget Subcommittee, we really try to get as close as possible to minimum local contribution. Of course, there are things that we do not have control of that go above and beyond that. One of them, last year, being insurance. And I always, we need to talk about transportation contracts, because the town of Kushner knows this, you have your own transportation contract that you bid, we have our transportation contract as well. The good thing about transportation at this time is we're getting regional transportation reimbursement, eighty to sometimes ninety percent, and we can apply that to the following year's budget. So that is extremely helpful, of course, not ever guaranteed. But two important pieces that I think we need to talk about, when we talk about the burden to a Kushner, is the fact that your minimum local contribution went up six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars last year to your local schools, period. That's not, that doesn't include any of your other departments. So we, I look at that, and I think that is absolutely a huge burden for the finance committee to talk about, for the town admins to speak about. It's incredibly difficult to balance a budget doing that. Rochester had a very, very similar scenario last year, and it was difficult for them as well. We do have a stabilization fund, we also have OPEB that we are contributing to. And last year, I just go to our reserve.
I'm just looking for capital expenditure budget. That's it.
So in our operating budget, we have fifty-thousand dollars, sixty-thousand this year for capital expenses. We usually buy one new piece of equipment. So either it's a piece of equipment for a shop, or it's a vehicle. Sometimes our maintenance department needs things, our cafeteria might need something, although they're pretty much a self-sufficient program at this point. So we now have a high enough reserve in our cafeteria program where we can buy our own equipment. Our shops might need a new piece of equipment. For the most part, annually, in our operating budget, it's fifty-thousand dollars in a piece of capital equipment. That is it.
Bob, I thought your question was what was in their stabilization?
That's what I thought.
Well, I said stabilization and capital repair budget, and then it went on a very longer version, so I think part of the question got lost in that. And that's not me saying anything negative about it, but ultimately, what I'm getting at is, in case, we have to think worst-case scenario, in case this doesn't happen.
Yeah, sure. In our stabilization fund last year, we had one...
So we don't end up in a debt exclusion right away in the spring again, or in the fall again.
Yeah. So in our stabilization fund last year, we have one-point-two-million. We carry about three-hundred-thousand dollars in our E and D. So five percent of Old Colony's operating budget gives us a threshold of seven-hundred-thousand dollars in E and D. We are never at the threshold of five percent. If we ever were, we'd have to return those funds back from our member towns. We never are. And then we also have OPEB of one-point-two-million. So one-point-two-million in OPEB and one-point-two-million in the stabilization fund. But if we were to have an emergency situation, we would absolutely go into our stabilization fund to help on that, and if we had to, our E and D, because we have those funds available, but that is also part of how we bond, right? So if we don't have OPEB, we don't have stabilization, and we don't have E and Ds, then we actually cannot bond.
I understand how operating's work. Thank you.
Can you bring up the chart where you add the budget, the operating budget? Just my head. Sure. And you said fiscal year thirty-four is when you'd be full capacity if a new school was built, and the operating budget is what?
Here. So after revenue, fourteen-point-three-four-million.
How's that happen?
Uh, it's after chapter seventy and chapter seventy-one-eight, so that...
So just to clarify, that's on top of the nine-million-nine-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand that is listed before eight now?
So basically, ten-million was last year's number. Assess the member towns.
It was nine-nine. What you see there is assessment.
So they were, we were given what, nine-million-nine-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars?
What year, what date was that on?
It was last budget season.
No, you don't put...
Nine-nine-seven-one?
Three-fourteen-two-thousand-twenty-five.
Yeah. So the difference is probably that we received additional chapter seventy, which the town will receive back in the fourth quarter.
Okay, so your budget's gone up the last two years a million dollars each year?
Our budget has not gone up a million dollars. It's gone up about five-hundred-thousand each year.
That's impossible with one-third of the school, and our assessment, and our assessment went up three-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars, was a third of a million.
Part of the increase to Old Colony's budget is our transportation, which we receive reimbursement for, and it is always applied directly to the budget. So part of the increase might be transportation, but it's being offset with revenue. That's not number town assessment.
Okay. Still a big nut, we talked about that the last go-around, right? What you actually bring back for reimbursements from transportation is not the actual number that you get back from the state for reimbursement.
Nor does a Kushner, right, for your, for your transportation.
I'm just talking budget numbers.
Sure.
You seem to be getting upset because we're talking what reality is.
No.
Reality is, is reality.
No.
I mean, I got the number right here. It's three-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars from twenty-six. Twenty-four was two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars.
Yes.
I mean, it's, the numbers, the numbers are gradually increasing.
Yes.
And it's roughly a million dollars year over year. I mean, to be honest with you, it's pretty simple to do a calculation, Sarah. But a simple fact that back in two thousand and twelve, all four member towns with a population of four-hundred-and-seventy-four kids going to the school, again, thirteen years ago, four-million-four-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-one-forty-nine, all five member towns. We are currently at nine-million-nine-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, thirteen years later. And the majority of that increase has come over the last few years, based on a Kushner's assessment, based on our population. And back then, we were forty-four percent of that school.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the budget is increasing, so how do you get to that number if that's minus the state aid? You're going eight years out, on top of the nine, that would be roughly seventeen million, you're three million short on that operating budget. From what we've seen over the last couple of years, if you continue to go up to nine-hundred, including transportation, because it's part of the budget.
And insurance.
So it's nine-hundred to a million dollars.
And we're talking about insurance, health insurance, which we are...
It's all part of the budget, though. We do the same thing in the town of a Kushner. I mean, you can't tell people, "Well, our increases for health insurance went up a million dollars, but we're not gonna use that as part of the budget." We have to capture that in taxation. It's all part of the budget process.
That's used everywhere. Insurance is used everywhere. We always show insurance.
I know, and I have your detailed budgets, Aaron. I'm just, it's, it's part of the budget.
Money follows students, so there's gonna be additional revenue because there's two-hundred-and-sixteen more students here, so you're gonna have a significant amount more revenue, right? Coming in with two-hundred-and-sixteen more students.
Mike, have you looked at what the town's operating budget will be in thirty, thirty, twenty, thirty-four? Like, as a finance committee, like, if you project it out, like, ten years from now, essentially, ten years from now, where it's like...
F-Y thirty's not ten years from now.
F-Y thirty-four. We're talking, will it connect the F-Y thirty-four number?
No, we haven't.
Mr. Jim, if I can answer that question, so the town's annual budget unfortunately's been going up roughly one-point-two-million dollars a year. The whole town budget, including school, the one in our K through eight, is going up roughly one-point-two-million a year. So if you want to just stick with a fixed number, saying nothing's gonna cost us any more, and multiply one-point-two times ten, that would be twelve-million more dollars from the current thirty-eight roughly-million dollars that we're currently at. It's out of control, and everything's out of control, and it's no, not nobody's fault. And Aaron, you were saying something about a previous school, saying something about, look. Let me just say it to everybody this way. When, when we talk about dollars, everybody thinks money grows on tree. Aaron's a hundred percent right. I said it back when we built a police department. Twelve years ago, we formed a building committee for a police department, and it came in at five-million bucks, and I said, "Five-million dollars today, imagine what it's gonna cost us in ten years. Look at the federal deficit. In two thousand and ten, we were roughly ten or twelve trillion dollars. Fifteen years later, we're at thirty-eight trillion dollars." People are spending money like drunken sailors, inflation, the federal government's created inflation beyond all of our control. We're paying more for everything across the board, because people down there are drinking off the punchbowl, thinking, because they have a printing machine. But none of us folks here in our small little towns have the same printing machine. We're on a pathway of collapse financially. Look at, look, follow the conversations that are really happening at, and I'm not talking about your crappy little news outlets. Stop following real news outlets, and you'll see what I'm talking about. The amount of debt in this country is out of control. The other countries are starting to de-peg themselves from the U.S. dollar. We cannot continue to spend money like we are spending money, and so many people have gotten used to that free money coming in. Sooner or later, that's gonna break, and it's gonna stop, and you're gonna hurt a lot of people. I get it, and I think...
To your point, if I may, to take a fifty-year-old building and put Band-Aids on it for fifteen years, and kick this can down the road, to me, is a tremendous mistake, because to your point, years from now, I can't even imagine what this will cost. There were other towns that forego, that, that did not engage in projects that were, that were quoted at a fraction of what they're paying for now. And realistically, we have an investment that has been at the, a cornerstone, I believe. And when you look every Thursday online at what we create in terms of our alumni spotlight, and what we do for our towns, how we give back, we're about to start a construction project in Rochester. We just finished the concession stand in Carver. We did the COA shed here in town. Old Colony is not just a place where kids walk through the door and get an education. Old Colony is a service-based organization that gives back to all five member communities. And the question is, if not now, when? And what do we do to modernize the facility, because our kids do deserve that? Not talking about they deserve flashy Lamborghinis. That's not what we've designed. We're talking about a regular, modernized facility without all the glitz and the glam. And unfortunately, to the point that was made last time when Mr. Teve spoke, he said, "I can't believe the way the numbers have trended." He's spot on. I feel the same way. I can't believe the way the numbers have trended. For, for us to look at a hundred-and-twenty, twenty-eight-million dollars for Cape Cod Tech, when they cut the ribbon in twenty-twenty-one, and for us to be where we are right now, to me, is heartbreaking. But if you said ten years ago, "We need to do work on a building that's forty years old," people would in their minds say, "What do you mean we have to do work on a building that's forty years old?" The timing wasn't right, and I would have agreed, because it's only forty years old. Forty and fifty are different. A decade is different. And it's true. A fifty-year-old building, built the way our building is built, and if you ever, if you've ever toured and looked at it, you can attest to it, because you went to school in it. And the way our building was built is like the old Carver building that got ripped down, because it was supposed to be up for probably thirty years. We're not talking about a Bristol Aggie that was built in the nineteen hundreds, nineteen thirteen, and you can rent it out easily. The buildings built in nineteen seventy-something are a heck of a lot different than the buildings that were built in nineteen thirteen. The nineteen thirteen buildings are more stable. You can do more with those. You can't do what we want to do with a nineteen seventies building. It's the truth. So I don't want to sit here in front of people and sugarcoat stuff. I want to be real.
How sad is that, though, whatever, what you just said?
Nobody's wrong here.
The people in nineteen twenty didn't have half the tools, half the building materials that we have currently, and that's still, that school's still standard, right? And they're not, they didn't knock it down. And they did knock it down. Actually, I'm on Bristol County Commission, and I did support the additions to that school, and I was actually shocked, a hundred-something-year-old school. We're not knocking it down. They're like, "No, perfectly fine." And that's, that's, that's the problem, which is, that's the problem I'm trying to explain to the people today. When I look at, and I'm not saying it ain't gonna be a beautiful school, but when I look at the number of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-million dollars, I say, "Are you kidding me?" Like, like, a hundred-million dollars, I would think that you would have two of those schools, right?
But my question for you is, which is the more fiscally sound decision?
I, I totally, totally get that. I think the bigger conversation for the people at home and in all the other communities that are struggling, working paycheck to paycheck, I think that's really where this evolves from. It's nobody's fault that something costs what it, I shouldn't say that. It's the federal government's fault for what things are costing us today, period. It doesn't matter whether you're going to a grocery store, whether you're paying a utility bill, it doesn't really matter. It, it is what it is, and you can tell just by looking at the U.S. debt. I just told you, two thousand and ten, look it up, we were pretty close to ten trillion dollars. Matter of fact, when Bill Clinton was in office, we had a surplus. We didn't have a deficit. End of story.
Anybody else have questions?
Eric? Go ahead, Aaron.
So I have two questions. One is, is this working? You know what? It don't work. Nobody wants me talking to the microphone. So two elephants in the room. Number one, can you explain for the taxpayers out there across the board? If, there's, there's two ballot questions. One is the building, to approve the actual building itself, and number two is to how we're paying for it. Can you explain to the people that if question one passes, but question two doesn't pass, what's the process going forward?
Sure. So that happened with Bristol Plymouth and Berkeley. I believe it was Berkeley. So Bristol Plymouth is the parallel to Old Colony for people who don't know. The question about building a new high school is coming from the Old Colony School Committee. That's put on the ballot by the Old Colony School Committee. People will vote yes or no. If people vote yes, we proceed regardless of what the outcome is. The, for the second question, the second question is put forth by the towns if they choose to ask for a debt exclusion. If a debt exclusion fails, the town can put out another vote for a debt exclusion. You can revisit that. That's what Berkeley did. However, folks should know, if a debt exclusion fails, the cost of the building is still the responsibility of the member towns. And that's a difficult piece for people to understand, or a difficult, I should say, a difficult pill to swallow. The really important piece to understand is, if we vote no on the building, there will still be implications, and that is also included on the tax impact calculator. So when you type in numbers, you can see the cost of a new high school, you can also see the cost of repair. So please go in, when you use the tax impact calculator, to look at both. It's really important to see the comparison, right? So to Mr. Chu's point, the first vote for the new high school, or not, is from the school district. The second vote, how to fund it, is from the town. If the second vote fails, the second vote can be put back out for reconsideration.
Now, is that a, is that an actual community vote as far as the actual override, or is that a, like, a Kushner is proposing that, and let's say if it doesn't...
The debt exclusion is only for the town, and so it's town-by-town.
So if a Kushner turns, says no for the debt exclusion, but Carver, Rochester, Lakeville all say yes, how, how does that work out?
So the, the debt exclusion vote was put out by the town, so it's only for that town, right? There's no aggregate. The aggregate is all... The building was, we chose to go with the aggregate for the building, and for people who missed the first presentation, there is a sixteen-D model and a sixteen-N. The sixteen-D is a town-by-town, the sixteen-N is an aggregate. The sixteen-D, if it fails, then moves to a sixteen-N. The delay between a sixteen-D and a sixteen-N is an eight-million-dollar cost. The reason why we chose to go right to a sixteen-N was because we figured if the town says yes, they say yes. If they say no, they say no. We're not gonna delay to the two-hundred-and-eight-million dollars. If we know that we'd end up at that same form of vote anyway, it didn't make sense. Because of sixteen-D, if you then go to a sixteen-N, it's like spitting in the faces of the people who said no to sixteen-D. It's not okay. So the committee said, "We're not playing that game. We're going right to the second option, and whatever they say, they say." But we refuse to have a bunch of people vote no, and then go to a sixteen-N following. That's just, that's not sound practice. And you add eight-million dollars potentially in it because of the delay.
I got, I got confused on Mr. Chu. I understood where it was going, but now I'm confused.
The debt exclusion is the instrument of funding the obligation. So if the voters say yes, we are obligated to fund the yes, right? So the debt exclusion is the instrument. If the town decides to not do a debt exclusion, then they have to figure out to get the money from another source.
Right, I understand that part, but...
What happens if...
That's fine. Okay, so now, because now the debt exclusion is coming from the towns themselves individually, so it's not, it's not an aggregate.
That's right.
So now, if these other communities say yes across the board, but a Kushner says no for the debt exclusion...
We're still on the hook for the obligation. So if we say no to the debt exclusion,
Yep.
then the finance committee will have to figure out where to come up with the money.
And God help us.
From the existing sources, right? Just like the, the school department most recently chose to go to a debt exclusion to fund that three-million-dollar air conditioning question. They could have chosen to take out of existing funds, out of the operating budget to pay for that, right? Or the town could have said, "No, we'll go to stabilization," or whatever that may be. So the debt exclusion is the instrument to fund the obligation if the town says yes, if, if the, if the district says yes.
So I'll just share too. Berkeley, the delay between their two debt exclusion votes was what, two and a half years?
Twelve.
Two and a half years. So it was rejected initially, two and a half years later, it was approved. So just, because what's gonna happen is, if this were a yes, there's some timing between when you'd actually see the first impact, if that makes sense. I have personally time for one more question, then I have to scoop. But part of our team is gonna stay to answer additional questions.
I read up a little bit on the MSBA, and I've read that they will actually fund up to eighty percent on some projects. So we're at sixty percent funded. Where's the, where's the difference? Why couldn't they go up a little bit higher?
So Jack can speak probably more eloquently to that than I can. But I will tell you, I've been at the State House on numerous occasions advocating for the differential between the cost to build a vocational school and the cost to build a traditional high school. And I do believe that the MSBA should be taking into consideration cost differentials. Think about the difference between building one gym versus call every large shop a gym, right? And what the cost differential is. And when you think about FFNE, there's a serious differential between what we would pay for furnishings in comparison to a classroom that relies solely on textbooks, right? So there are differentials, and I've been advocating aggressively to see changes around that. But I think, realistically, in terms of how the current formula exists, Jack could probably, because he has more experience with it, speak more eloquently to it.
Mike, I just want to share with you, like, I've been on the committee, and I can only, I can speak to the process, right? And I said at the last meeting, I'm not gonna, or previous meetings, I'm not gonna get into people's mindset, or their pocketbooks, or their wallets, try to either shame them into voting for it, or scare them into not voting for it, right? But the one thing I can say, with my twenty-four, twenty-four to thirty years of serving this town, is that they've been very disciplined in what they've said, of what they're saying, what they're telling people. We could speculate and say, "Oh, yes, we'll get eighty percent. Oh, yes, we'll get more grants. Oh, yes, we'll get all this." Or, "Yes, it'll be like Bristol Plymouth, and they'll drive the cost down in millions." But they've been very disciplined in what they've shared with the public. What's been given is the worst-case scenario and not-to-exceed number, right? Will it come down? Possibly. But they're not gonna hang the hat on that and make that part of the campaign, because it would be disingenuous, it would be wrong, and it would be, quite frankly, fraudulent to the taxpayer. So it's a great question, but I think to the school-building committee and the school committee's credit, they've been very disciplined in what they've, what they say, what they've been saying with the public.
Dave, I'm not disputing the transparency, okay? I mean, and I've credited them over the years with the budgets that they presented to us. And I've asked our school department here to model theirs because of the transparency that they provide. So there's no question or doubt. But as far as, you know, numbers, I mean, I've been on the finance committee for twenty years. So I'm strictly looking at numbers. I'm taking personalities out of it, I'm looking at straight-up numbers. And the bottom line is, each family in this town is gonna have to do what's affordable for them. They're gonna have to make the decision for themselves, do their own math, and see what they can afford.
Well, I just want to address, Mike, because you asked him about the disparity between sixty and eighty percent.
I'm not trying to shame anybody.
No, 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 I just wanted you to know that if, the reason why they haven't either been touting those efforts or talking about the disparity between sixty and eighty percent is that they wanted to make sure that they weren't overhyping what he's trying to pull off as far as reimbursement goes.
I get it, and I just...
Yeah, exactly. They want to overpromise, they just wanted to give, "This is what the project costs, this is what the..."
And I understand that the MSBA and DESI puts all these requirements built into this project, which actually drive up the cost, because you have to have larger rooms and all that, the bigger square footage. I just wish, I wish our state provided more funding for public education projects like this. Because they waste billions of dollars, and this is where we need it right now. And it's, instead, it's gonna fall on the backs of taxpayers potentially. And that's, that's what's really troubling to me, and that's, that's the part that I hate with this whole process.
That's a fair point. So to answer your question, yes, they do go up to eighty percent. The formula is based on a number of factors, but they're largely just raw data from DLR. They'll look at income factor, they'll look at property wealth factor. They rerun the numbers the year they are invited into Executive Projects to a Budget Agreement, which is this year. So when Old Colony started, their base rate before incentives, based on that DLR data, was fifty-four-point-one-six plus incentives. When they reran the numbers this year, it came up a little bit to fifty-four-point-seven-nine percent base rate, and then we have the five-point-seven percent incentives that were going on, and that gets you the sixty-point-four-nine. So it's just raw number crunching, DLR data. There's no negotiation that happens, or whatever would happen.
Have they? Because in the question, I've read through this thing a bunch of times, and it says, "After done including payment of all costs incidental and relative there to the project, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life of an education facility for an instruction in schoolchildren, of schoolchildren of at least fifty years, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Mass Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended at the direction of the school committee. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow set amount under pursuant general law, Chapter Seventy-One, subsection sixteen N, and the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other named authority. The district acknowledges that the MSBA grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any project costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district." I won't bore you with the rest. So it looks like all five member towns are going for two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollars to authorize that, right?
That's the MSBA's required...
What?
That's the MSBA's required, which we're not allowed to do.
No, I understand, so let me get to the big hook in the room, right? So what happens if MSBA, I don't know if they've already signed a guarantee with us in the school, and said, "We're guaranteeing you sixty percent reimbursement," or is that still up in the air? Because it talks about non-entitlement, and maybe, when somebody uses the word "may," it scares the hell out of me. Are we getting something? Or what happens if something happens with MSBA grant funding, and they say, "We can't give you anything"? Are we on the hook for two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollars? Because we authorize that borrowing as five member towns?
So part of this, kind of two pieces of that. So the first part is why does it all say "may" will future terms, right? And it's a chicken-and-egg situation. So they're looking to see your local funding authorization. They want certified vote results before they'll enter into a project funding agreement. So once you get those vote results in, you have a funding agreement, signed and sealed within a matter of weeks, maybe a month or two. Why the language is written the way it is, they don't know what happens between now and that month or two, right? MSBA members funded by state sales tax, so they do have a steady funding source. I mean, in extreme example, could sales tax be eliminated in Massachusetts? I guess so, I don't think it's likely.
You don't think it's likely?
But that is their funding source. And that leads into the second part of the question, why they cap those costs, why they cap the reimbursement percentage. It's really supply and demand with the MSBA. They're limited, they have that one penny of every dollar in the sales tax, and they're trying to spread it around to as many communities as possible. And the numbers up there between the repair and the new are close intentionally from the MSBA's standpoint. They're trying to make them close because they want you to move forward with the program, but they don't want to make it so appealing that now they don't have enough money to fund more schools. They'd rather do twenty schools in a year with less money than do ten schools a year with more money.
I just want to make sure that we're never gonna be on the hook for that total amount.
That language has been there for twenty years, and I've never seen the projects be on the hook for the language that you see there.
I think it's like a mortgage agreement, right? Well, we agree to do this, but you gotta do this. And if you don't do this, then we don't do this.
Exactly. I can't say we will have a project funding agreement within a matter of time when they receive those certified vote results. It is a chicken-and-egg situation.
So if this passes hypothetically, when is shovels in the ground? How, what's the future?
So we have about a year of design. So on November eighteenth, if the vote is successful, that year will carry design right through basically the end of next year. So twenty-twenty-six will be a detailed design here. We have three more submissions to the state. We go back, we check the numbers. There's also opportunities for us to drill down and say, "Okay, hey, if we carve out this and fire it out as an early Chapter Thirty package, we can save some money." So that's what we are doing over that entire year of design. And the designers are working to get a biddable project out of the street. After that, the bid period is two to three months. So that carries through the holidays into early twenty-twenty-seven, and then we have shovels in the grounds spreading, yeah, ground pot twenty-twenty-seven. I do think we have an early package likely next summer for the waterline connection. That's an easy one to carve out as a Chapter Thirty bid package, get the waterline tied in, keep that risk behind you. And, I mean, that's kind of how our approach works with these projects. And like Bristol Plymouth, we take as much risk and put it behind us as we can. So when we do put a bid with that full bid package, you've already made it as much risk as possible.
So, question, is that... I'm gonna do Kevin of this. Kevin's new phrase these days is "bans." Is there any way of doing that kind of stuff for this project, or is that...
Bans are shot-term borrowing, and this would not be something like that. So, again, I ran the schedule, thirty years, forty percent, forty-four percent on what I believe will be our share, it might be a little bit under about fifty million bucks. We're paying three, roughly, two-point-eight-five million dollars a year will be what we have to have on a debt exclusion, carry that close to three million bucks for the sake of this conversation for thirty years.
Before we go too far down that rabbit hole, so the district is working with Unibank on this project, they appear by fully with them.
I know Unibank, I just did it with my born Hill Cross. So just running vague numbers again, because it ain't gonna change that dramatically. In fact, it could go up, it could go down a bit, right? Based on population, I know how enrollment works. I was part of Old Colony.
So not really...
On FinCom from two thousand and five to ten, so I've done a lot about the enrollment, how the equation changes in per capita, and how to get wealth method and all that.
So Unibank is recommending two bans on this project. One in December of twenty-five for nine million, one in December of twenty-six for eighteen million.
That will roll into the bond.
And roll, yeah. So that's the district that's gonna ban a certain number to keep the project moving forward, kind of like what we're doing with a golf clubhouse, right?
Exactly.
So we're just, that's a shot-term borrowing, you're gonna hit that nine million, it'll come up whatever it'll be.
One year.
One year. Right. So that's just to keep things going on what you project will be in your first year of construction costs and all of that?
We'll bond in twenty-eighty.
Correct.
Anybody else have any questions?
David, if I could just for a minute?
Rob, do you know why I just go and...
Rob Gomes, twelve-eighty Main Street.
Do you mind just going up to the podium?
Oh, sure.
Sorry, just...
I'm the first one today, you know that, right? Hi, buddy, I'm Rob Gomes, twelve-eighty Main Street. I'm honored to be a school committee member, and I also served on the building committee. And, you know, all this stuff is really interesting to me. Truthfully, I've been in construction my whole life, and when I heard those numbers, I was staggered. It was like, it blew me away. But I saw the information, the data to substantiate it, and I get it. I don't like it, but I get it. But I want to say this, because it hasn't been mentioned at this meeting, a lot has, but this hasn't. In reference to renovating our existing building, would be irresponsible. It would simply be irresponsible. The MSBA does reimburse for renovations. It's not doing it because they know it's irresponsible. And the thing that hasn't been mentioned, it would be an injustice to the students. Has anybody had their kitchen or the bathroom done while you're living at home? Right, most of us had something, right? Kids are doing that for maybe forty years, like Mr. Gasper said. Those kids are gonna be, you know, out of their element every time we do some sort of a project. These projects are not easily isolated. Breaking floors for plumbing underneath, breaking walls for bracing, changing doorways. I know, I've been in this. We have no other school to send them to while all this is happening. It's an injustice to the kids to think that you can remodel that in a way that education still happens. So I just wanted to add that, because I didn't think it was brought up. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Taylor, eighteen Green Meadow Drive. I'm embarrassed to say that I did not know a lot about this project till about ten days ago, when a good friend of mine asked me how I felt about it and what I was gonna do. And so, Frank, I've watched the, one of the YouTube things, and I want to thank you guys for the work you've done, and I can see the effort you've put in. So I just had a couple of questions. The first is, I think I heard, I'm not an accountant, and I'm not a debt exclusion person, but I... My, one of my questions was, if this is a thirty-year project, and something changes every four or five years, and then all of a sudden, I don't know, maybe Matapoison, or maybe Rochester grows high, and we come down a little bit, do the numbers automatically get revisited so that we're not paying the thirty-five percent? Okay, thank you, that's good, that's good news. The next question, and I'm happy to say that I came to a cushion at the same year that Old Colony was built, so we're fifty-year people. The, what happened fifty years ago when the decision was made to build that school? Was it the five towns all paid equally? Or was something like this done based on a student count? Does anybody know that? Probably not.
I think it was all five. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I want to say.
I've been in the town for fifty-seven years, thank you very much. I was six years old when that occurred.
Lakeville was not an original member.
So, right, and then we had Shirley. I've worked with Shirley, I've always admired Shirley. She's an extremely intelligent woman, she knows more about finance and budget numbers than I'd ever dream of. But anyways, I have a lot of admiration for you, Shirley, as you know. Freetown was also a tuition school that we got rid of. They opted out of when we gave them an option four years ago. This year was their last student, I think they had one left, and they captured about one-point-three-million dollars of that budget. So that really impacted the five member towns as well, because you didn't have that, you know, back then it was a million bucks, and it's grown to a million-three. So, you know, that was also a big increase in the budget cost. But I don't know, I probably have the original agreement at home, Mr. Taylor, from Old Colony. It was amended in two thousand and eight.
It's been amended a few times.
Eighteen, I think, was the last one? Eighteen, nineteen?
When it opened, it opened with four towns. Lakeville was not a member, even though they were in the planning stages of it, but they backed out, Lakeville and Freetown, from what I understand. Ten years later, Lakeville asked to join the district, they bought into the district. Freetown never decided to become a member. It was an agreement between the district and Freetown to provide an opportunity until the enrollment requests from the five towns grew so large we could no longer honor Freetown kids.
And they didn't want to buy in like, you know, that was like, four years, five years ago, we did that with them, this year's the last year.
And my last question, again, based on my own ignorance on this subject, but I think with the election coming up, it might be a good idea if somehow you guys could put out something, maybe you already have, and I don't know about it, but what's the... Why, what's the value of this? What, if you vote yes, here's what you get, and if you vote no, here's what you get. And, you know, I'm a proponent of Old Colony and vocational students, so... But I think people need to be educated, because I'm pretty, I like to think that I'm somewhat smart, but I had no clue. And so I think people need an understanding of what's happening. I don't think there's enough people there.
That's why we're sitting here right now. Because this is the third meeting I pushed for to make sure that we could get the message out to the residents even more. And, believe me, I'd like to get more out on social media as far as education, if we can. So people are fully aware of the impact, and either way.
Yeah. Either way, right. And thank you for doing it on your own, because I guarantee you ninety-five percent of the residents here are not doing it. Oh, sure, Rob, but, you know, the damage collectors can tell me in a couple of weeks in advance what day they're not coming. I think we need to put something out in a form, you know? But anyway, whatever you can do, I appreciate it.
Mr. Timber, I did notice that the, you know, the sign on Nice Lane, we got one down at the Town Hall, we got a bunch of light-up signs, we could put one over here, Council on Agent, another one down at DBW. I really think the Board of Selectmen really need to make that decision. Matter of fact, I would make that a motion tonight to light those signs up, talking about a debt exclusion. Put the number up on the sign, November eighteenth, so they know what the hell's going on, right? Because it was, the sign said, "Early voting, November eighteenth," and that was pretty much the end of that. And I know early voting didn't get anything really for participation. That tells me a lot, as you just alluded to. Not many people know what the hell's going on, and they're gonna be blindsided by this, right? So I think we need to get that message up on the light-up boards, and I would actually make that motion right now. So I think we need to get that message up on the, the, the light-up boards, and I would actually make that motion right now.
I'll second that motion and I'll actually follow that up, I was in a conversation.
It's a, it's a motion made by a board of selectmen over here.
I'll second that.
Mr. Hinkley just seconded, so.
Okay, there we go.
We'll, we'll put up a message on the, on the light-up boards and, and see if we can get more people's attention, but it's, it, I hope that that's not the case. And I know that social media, because I do have people that watch and follow me, I'm not on it, would drive me absolutely crazy trying to respond. I know Mr. Hinkley does a lot of that, I bless him. I, I, I know, there's just too much misinformation. I just think people, you know, need to know, and I know that Mr. Hinkley's done a good job and Mr. Chu's been on it as well on social media, just telling them, go back and watch the meetings, right? The first one was September ninth, second one was October twenty-seventh or something like that. And then, and then tonight's meeting, and that's all we could do is have these, I mean, there's been three. They haven't been long in duration, but I think we've covered a lot of ground in the, the amount of time, the three meetings that we've had for the most time, um, to get people to know what the hell they're voting on, um, it's.
That and the Old Colony's building site that they have up there has all these details plus more than what we saw today.
All of eighty-seven.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's all out there, I mean, Old Colony's done a, a, a great job with their website, with giving people information and, and, you know, it goes by the total amounts of yes, total amounts of no. It really can come down to one town, either making this happen or making it fail. Let's not be fooled. If you have four towns that you only get a thousand people that come out and vote and it's split fifty-fifty, the town of Akushan has over seventy-five hundred registered voters. Could you imagine what would happen if the town of Akushan had came out, all seventy-five hundred for once in its lifetime, came out and cast a vote? Now, I'm not gonna say which way that vote would go, I'm just trying to explain to the people the impact that we as one community really do have, um, to make it happen or not happen. It's up to the people, as Chairman said, we're not here to tell people how to vote for it. I, I wouldn't be very comfortable if I came out and spoke either way. It's everybody's individual vote that needs to be cast based on your comfort level of what you're paying in taxes, period. But you need to get out and vote.
And if I could, uh, just a comment to going out. I cannot tell you how many presentations we've made, um, to be honest with you, even watching the video. I, I could probably close my eyes and do the video in my, my mind without any help. We have probably been out to forty to fifty, um, locations throughout the district. We've been multiple times to the boards of selectmen and FinCom. We have done all of the COAs, uh, we went to the Akushanet Lions Club, I believe.
You did?
That was one at Danny's. Um, we have, anybody who's asked us, we've been, you know, we're, we are working diligently and exhaustively to get the message out, but to the point you made, you have to be an informed voter. And the decision is a personal decision for each household. I know you've talked about, um, the burden on the taxpayer in Akushanet. I live in the town of Rochester. You wanna see a burden on the taxpayer? We have, I don't know if you put that, that slide up. We have just about half of your student population and we're paying less than a hundred dollars, um, on your, on the tax rate. Because Rochester has absolute, well, other than one large commercial facility, we don't, everything comes off the, the backs of the taxpayer. And the taxpayer individually needs, I get sometimes, because I'm a senior, I get offended sometimes when people say it's difficult for seniors and, and I'm in total agreement, it's difficult for seniors. It's difficult for everybody. You know, when you're young, you have a mortgage, you have a family, it's difficult. When you're a senior, I am a senior, I'm fixed income, uh, it's difficult. The decision is, it has to be personal, you have to do what's right for you. But I have been working for a very long time volunteering on, in public education. And I wholeheartedly believe in public education. It's public education because it's paid for by the public. The state comes in and they help us with chapter seventy and maybe on a good year you get eighty percent of your regional transportation, even though they promised you a hundred percent. When they, you know, were trying to get schools to regionalize, people, again, people have to do what they feel best, but it's a decision that yes, every, every town has a say. Uh, I hope everybody comes out and has their say, but ultimately you have to do what's right for you and your town. And ultimately, I'm gonna ask you to do what's right for your children. You know, um, the nice thing about being appointed to Old Colony is that you are appointed. And I have publicly said, my constituency, I'm not the adults in the room. My constituency is the students in the room. And while I have a fiduciary responsibility to the town of Rochester, and in a situation like this, I have a fiduciary responsibility to every member district of the district. I will always go back to my primary responsibility is to my constituency and those of the students. I have, personally, I have to do what's best for the kids.
Thank you, Shirley. Chairman, any other? Yes?
Hi, John Tebs, uh, on Glory's Way. I'll be fast. So we have a calculator? Got a phone, Bobby, you got a phone? Their operations budget for next year is gonna be sixteen million. And divide that by roughly five hundred fifty-four students. What do you have, Bobby?
Forty-eight eighty-eight.
That's, that's how much it costs to send a kid to Old Colony. And the discrepancy happens when, on the town, they put a three percent increase on their operating budget. And the state doesn't put a three percent on what they're given. Then the gap, they could put a three percent on it and then Akushanet gets a nine percent, for example. So I think, Mr. Gasper, that could be where you're saying, where's this off? Because if our trajectory is like this and yours is like this, what's going on? Could be, I don't know. And then this debt.
I just want to make sure, when did you get those numbers, sir?
They have, they have.
No, no, you just went percent, percent, percent. Did you calculate that or you just speculated?
No, I'm just, I mean, I was on a school committee and, and sometimes when, when they were like, hey, you've got a three percent, we're, we're presenting a three percent, um, budget increase. I said, well, that's not a three percent to the town of Akushanet. That's more like a seven or eight percent to the town of Akushanet after we get our state money. The amount that the town of Akushanet needs to add and pay year to year goes up substantially higher than, um, than the overall budget.
So Mr. Tebs, could, just, just on your point, I think when you talk about percentages, right? So I always tell people in, you know, the school departments, regardless of what school department is, I don't care if you're in Timbuktu and you come in, your budget's fifteen million dollars, you say, but I'm only up three percent. Really? That's a lot of, a lot of money compared to this guy that's got a one million dollar budget and he's up, or she's up three percent, right? So I don't like using percentages when I try to talk to the people of Akushanet, the taxpayers of Akushanet? Because they get a little confused on, oh, they're only up three percent, but three percent of fifteen million dollars is a lot of money, right? Versus somebody else with a million dollar budget going up the same three percent. They're like, what are they arguing about? That guy's up three percent, they're up three percent, everybody's whole, no you're not, right? So the number, when you just asked Mr. Hinkley to break out the calculator and you jumped to next year's sixteen million dollar, if that's the anticipated number, let's just go with what we know, which is this year's budget, operating budget that we're in right now. Their budget was fifteen million dollars, right?
Yep, it's twenty-seven grand.
Right, so just call it twenty, so that number, as, again, I just don't want the people that'll watch it. And anybody being at home skewed on what that cost is. So it's true, that number is true, twenty-seven thousand dollars. However, the, the real number after chapter seventy is seventeen thousand nine oh one.
Right.
So that's what, that's the average of all five towns.
Right.
Okay? And I break out and I do every town, because I'm just that guy.
No, 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 I understand.
But the average for all five member towns is seventeen thousand nine oh one, so if the number was twenty-seven, you're getting roughly nine thousand bucks.
Right, right, right.
Per student, right? Chapter seventy.
Right.
And things of the like.
Right, but it, it all comes from tax regals.
It's, John, it comes down to the same thing I just talked about. Everybody's a bunch of drunken sailors, not saying anything about the people in this room or our own town departments. Everything's costing more money, it, it, it's paralyzing.
With, with the debt exclusion. And assuming we go out to seven hundred seventy-six students, okay, that cost per student is eleven-six a year. So you add that onto the twenty, what did we just say, twenty-seven? We're at thirty-nine-ish? So that's, if it were me, I think, um, and, and like, that's what I'd be working on? Just FYI, BP, for example, with their debt exclusion, with their operating, is at twenty-seven-seven per student next year. That's with the debt.
When was that project approved and voted on?
About, uh, I think that was four years, four years ago, twenty-twenty-one.
I would love to live in four years ago numbers and four years ago.
No, that's it.
For everything.
Yeah, but BP's operating per student was below twenty-four thousand.
Understood, but still, I mean, just like, I would love to live back in twenty-twelve.
I'm talking about today. It's a four thousand dollar difference between what we pay for OC child and, and a, and a BP child. What, what, all I'm saying is, if it were me, I would focus on that, because that's what's gonna be important. If, we talk about like the high school options, the tuition that's paid to the other high schools is, is substantially less than what we're paying to, to OC.
But it's a different type of education.
It does, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing that.
I think what Mr. Tebs is getting at is the operational budget impact that this could have.
Correct.
It may involve to our overall annual, annual budget. I, I don't disagree with that, but I think.
With all due respect, you're talking in generalities. And I think that it's really important to be intentional when we have a conversation, that we're talking about, like, if you, and I, again, I'm glad you're here and you run the school committee and I respect that, but, you know, just like I'm holding, I'm trying to hold myself to a standard of not talking about potential, um, actions to drive down the costs, whether like, we talked about a BP or potential additional reimbursement. I think it's just really important to make sure that we talk not in generalities, but really drill down on it, because it can be very misleading. I get it, you're, you're opposed to the project.
No, no, no.
Or you're opposed to what's going on, right?
No.
And, but I, that's how I take it, so I just want to make sure I, we're on the same page. I was hearing you.
No, I think, I think it's, 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 um, it's been an opportunity to kind of look at the, the idea that it's, it's a, um, it's a very expensive proposition.
We also have to look at the fact that right now we're in negotiations with other towns for our high school students, right? So the number discrepancy that you use around here on four thousand dollars could be drastically different after these negotiations and could certainly be a lot closer.
I, I completely agree, I completely agree.
Mr. Wu, now over there is talking about, you know, we can't talk about generalities like that and come out with specific numbers and try and use them. We can't use the four thousand dollars when we don't know what tomorrow's gonna be with what we have or gonna have available.
So I was gonna make some comments, actually, based, like, I thought was positive, because if you, if there is a discrepancy, there's a difference in the, the students and then the lottery is actually gonna decrease the amount that you get sent there, it actually improves some of the operations.
Right, plus the operation budgets, like you had said before, you, we're not adding the numbers on to the twenty-eight. The numbers are gonna be less per student because your operating expenditure is over more students.
No, 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 no.
That's what he said earlier.
No, that's not true.
That's impossible.
It's a possible. It's gonna go up.
We have really good questions together. Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Long Mr. Chairman.
I'm not gonna argue with you.
Point of order.
Bobby, you're coming at me like concern is that.
I'm not gonna come at you, point of order, may I finish? I'm gonna say something.
You just asked me that I should, you said.
No, I said, if you want to, you can, but point of order, I would like to bring something up that I'm noticing across social media, across this room, and I wish everybody was here to explain, and I think it's gonna explain what is happening here. And I don't think it goes against you, Mr. Tebs, or anybody else that spoke. I think it's actually gonna be beneficial to everybody and it has no implication or opinion at all.
I'm gonna give you the floor, but I'm gonna finish what I was saying, until you said, I'm welcome to leave.
Okay, but keep, stop bringing it up.
But Bobby, you said it, okay? Is that we've got back and forth conversations and now we have misinformation. So to my point of, when we're, I'm asking people who are in this forum to speak with specific facts to avoid this. Now the floor's yours, that was what I was suggesting, okay?
So you already said that and I appreciate that, I value that. What I'm noticing, across social media, across this room, everybody who spoke tonight, anybody that seems to ask a question that isn't even the tiniest little bit against this, because it's perceived as against this. Asking operational budget questions, asking overall project costs, none of this should be perceived as against the project. These are valid questions that the taxpayers of Kuschnet have been talking about for months and months and months, saying, how is this gonna impact me? Is my mother going to lose her house? I don't have the answer to that, because we don't know what each person can do. What I will say is, and I don't appreciate, is when somebody asks a question to try to get to the bottom of what our actual operational cost is gonna be, people get defensive, and that needs to stop, because it's not because they're against the project. And I'm not using Mr. Tebs as an example, anybody who's talked to me in the last six months has asked these questions and I'm watching it online and people are vultures and they're screaming at each other. It's honest to ask questions to get to the bottom of it. And I just saw it with you, and I don't mean to get, I didn't mean, I apologize how I reacted to that. What I noticed when Mr. Tebs started talking about budgets, you got a little defensive. Pete, I know you didn't mean to, but you're saying this is not how it goes, this isn't this. He's asking a question and I, I think he's using numbers that definitely need some refinement here, but all he's asking is what is the operational implication on the town? And everybody has been asking that across the board. So yeah, you're gonna have a seven hundred dollar average, hit your tax bill based on five hundred thousand dollars or so. Over the course of the last maybe three to four years, our annual increase to our operational budget is between seven fifty and eight fifty. If everything else is going up three percent and we haven't budged, this is what I think we gotta look at. This is the important part. And this is no, by no means me saying I'm against this project. This isn't me saying I'm for this project. What this is saying is, what's gonna happen in five years to our annual budget? Obviously, we don't have a giant revenue stream that's gonna pop up tomorrow. So we have to look at it this way, and I think back and forth between for or against is automatically assumed with questions, and that needs to stop. Our job is to help answer these questions and not get defensive, not have an opinion based on it. This is it, it's just, what's point A, what's point B, what's it gonna cost everybody and how do we get there? That's it.
Where I was getting things, Bobby, and, uh, I'm gonna jump in just because, where I was going with this was I, I was saying, I think that this process is an opportunity for us to look at the operational cost on a go-forward basis for the education that we're providing in this town. It's a big line item. And this is, we're addressing one school that's gonna take on forty to fifty kids a year.
Two hundred. All operations, two hundred, two hundred six total.
New students, new students, forty to fifty new students per year, I think that's what you said with the law.
It would be based on the new size of the school. We talked about two hundred extra students, we have the capacity of about five fifty, going to seven fifty. I know Aaron used seven forty-nine, which is the minus one, which drives me.
It's going from five sixteen to seven seventy-six.
Some wacky number, right, it's off by a one digit, but who cares? Let's just call it for the sake of this discussion, I like keeping things simple, right? Two hundred additional students, you have five member towns, if each one got an additional, that would be forty students, right? We're currently floating anywhere between the one eighty-five number up to two-ten is what Akushanet does. Just call it two hundred, averaged out, right? So maybe we go up forty students. You, we keep talking about operational and, and the first meeting in September ninth, when I said it would be an automatic forced override for the operational budget, that is a true statement, no matter how you wanna cut and slice this, you're not cutting services to the degree of trying to balance budgets when we get to full capacity in five or six years down the road, okay? When I said, when I talked about fifteen additional, um, you know, teachers with academic in shop, I just talked to Chad, is it Chad? And I asked him, I said, when, when the second meeting came in, I think it's October twenty-seventh, I might be wrong on that date, but I know the first one was September ninth. And they put up, they didn't answer the question fully, but they put up and they gave me what the beta was between all the things. And Chad just gave me something about fif- thirty extra, um, teachers.
At five classes.
Huh?
At five classes.
Let's forget about transportation, we only, I only tried answering the question, it couldn't be answered on September ninth. So on a hundred grand, including health insurance, might be more, might be a little less for different ones, positions, let's just float it out a hundred grand, so again, easy math. So I said fifteen is close to the thirty, so times that same hundred, that's three million bucks, okay? That basically answers the question of just teachers, I don't know about anything else that would be added in and janitorial and things of the like. So it's not just teachers, thirty new teachers. It, operational for headcount, right, to do, to provide the services they need to, would add in the new schools, it's roughly three million bucks.
We're missing a big piece in that, so chapter seventy, chapter seventy-one.
So, yeah, they're. So yeah, then you get the reimbursement back for whatever chapter seventy.
And you're right, we, we don't know that's going to go up three percent per year. Probably not. But we do know that the aid follows the student. So that's, that's the big piece that completes the puzzle, I think, that you're trying to mean. Yes, costs go up three percent annually. No, aid probably doesn't go up three percent annually. But between now and the seven seventy-six condition, you add forty percent in open capacity. So your aid is going to increase based on your student headcount. That's what takes us from the fourteen point seven eight percent increase in the status quo in FY thirty-four to the six point zero four percent. And that is, so that's your, your three million versus the delta that you see up there is that.
Right, so basically forty percent on a student, surely is that a closer number based on what we just, so if it's forty percent, just basically take off one point two from the three, so you're back to.
Okay, right, right.
One point eight.
There you go.
Additional costs on the backs of taxpayers, including the chapter seventy from that three billion bucks. If that's the all-in number, it might be a little less, might be a little bit more. Just all I'm trying to do is guess to give people an idea. But it, it, you know, let's just, let's just say all we were doing was the debt exclusion. We talked about that number. They put up a number of seven twenty-one or something per household, the average. I did some math on, you know, what I have broken out, cost per hundred thousand dollars of five hundred thousand dollar homes, like six hundred and thirty. You get to an eight hundred thousand dollar home, that number goes to eleven hundred dollars just for the debt exclusion, no operational impact, right? So just to give people an idea, that's really what you're looking at. And then once a few years down the road, we'll be talking operational costs and that will be a whole different ballgame. And it will be extremely, I think Mr. Wu Shain mentioned it, it will be extremely difficult because the operational and the way the, we still use the aggregate wealth method for budget.
Yeah.
So with, with that, that, well, I'll call it a floating device on how the state calculates everything and how they derive to their numbers for each member town and each student that goes in that aggregate wealth method. There's no way to say your budget cost is going to be fixed at two hundred thousand dollars a year. Every year it's going to be floating. So how do we manage that for thirty years? I don't know. Do we just go at maximum capacity and say this is what it is or whatever you don't use? You keep on the sideline? I don't have that answer yet. All that would impact us. I guess we could talk to Ms. Bork, she would probably know better about that or other schools that have done these kind of things and ask them how you float that into the equation and calculate for future budgetary reasons.
Sure. I thought, if nothing else, regardless of what happens, right, through the vote, I thought, I thought it was an opportunity to take a look at that on a go-forward basis because I think it's a, it's an important, it's an important metric to know, like what are we, what are we paying per student for, for the education in this town?
I think, I think we just delivered those answers tonight, no?
What's that?
I think we just delivered those answers tonight, no?
What do you mean?
Are you trying to confuse me now?
No, no, no. There's, there's two, there's two numbers. There's the cost, right? And then, and then there's the numbers that, there's the amount that the town of Akushnet needs to contribute to that cost.
I thought I just gave you that number. On, on, on a rough basis, I mean, I'm, it's not as everybody may be. Nobody can go boom.
No, we're on, we're on OC, but I'm saying.
I think, I think I'm doing a pretty good job of giving you a basic roundabout number and I, and I'm willing to come back in four years and say, I was pretty damn close, wasn't I?
But thank you. Appreciate it.
So can we speak to one other question that he had? So the four thousand dollar delta between BP and OC. So remember that's OC's worst case scenario. When you brought these projections, there's no IRA money in there, there's no asset money in there. That's eleven million off the one fifty-nine right from the start. Also, bid savings, contingency savings, all that stuff that we've talked about previously. Another big piece is efficiency of scale. So if you look at the operating cost projection that we have on the slide a moment ago, the operating cost per student in the future condition is similar to what the operating cost per pupil is in the present condition. BP has one thousand four hundred and fifty-four student design at home. So part of the reason their operational cost per student is lower is they have that scale of efficiency in their programs.
Right. This is a dilution factor.
Right. And you see that in Old Colony too. So we, we ran that number out and we said, okay, so cushion share and OC FY thirty-four, we just use a straight forty percent increase. We don't think it's going to be that, but that's probably a worst case scenario. We were four point six eight million dollars. So that translated, if you took forty percent student population increase, which again, shouldn't say, two hundred and seventy-one students per pupil for Akushnet is seventeen thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We can compare that if we go back this far. Like, so we know today Akushnet sending students to New Bedford is at twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-nine. We can go back nine years in the past and know that was eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-three. So it's increased thirty-nine percent in those nine years. If you take that same number today, that twelve thousand, and throw it forward nine years, you're at exactly where Sarah and the business office are on their numbers in Old Colony. So it's not a function of, I think, Old Colony per se, it's a function of its economy and its escalation and its things that you've already spoken to.
Sir? Good evening. Kent Soviet, Northwest Street, in Akushnet. Selectmen Gaspard's correct. Today's time, it's crazy. It's crazy, the cost of doing anything today. Superintendent Pulaski mentioned ten years ago, Upper Cape Quad Tech was built at one hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. Today, ten years later, Old Colony is looking to build a, a facility, a new state-of-the-art facility, two hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. Let's just regress a minute and think back in the early seventies. A concept and a vision was thought of to build a state-of-the-art building in the woods of Akushnet vocational technical high school for the students of the community that they serve in. Can you think of how the people then thought, how are we going to pay for this? Same question today. Back then, the price of a dozen eggs, seventy-seven cents. The price of a pound of hamburger, twenty-eight cents a pound. Today, it's crazy. Minimum wage, back then it was a dollar sixty an hour. Through the fifty years that Old Colony has successfully been educating our students, thousands of students have graduated from Old Colony. Selectmen Gaspard being one of those graduates, look at him today. He's been a selectman here, town of Akushnet, for many years. You look at a project like this, one thing at the October twenty-seventh meeting that stood out to me was the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee saying how transparent Old Colony has been throughout this, talking about a new school. They have been transparent with everything. They said, you can look at line items one by one by one. We've heard this. We understand this. So they're not trying to pull wool over anybody's eyes. We're looking at a two hundred and eighty-eight million dollar facility. We're looking at credits that total up to quite a bit of money. And we're looking at a hundred and forty-eight point seven million on the taxpayer payroll. Well, we can't afford a two hundred and eighty-eight million dollar project. Hundred and forty-eight sounds a lot better than two hundred and eighty-eight million. It's a lot cheaper than the hundred and eighty-eight million dollar school that was built in Upper Cape. Cost repairs for these existing buildings, which is busting at its seams. It's obsolete, it's antiquated. There's too many systems there that need to be replaced. Gentleman spoke about the interruption of education of the children. As he mentioned, you start cutting up walls, start cutting up floors, that disrupts the education role for our students. If we do not do anything whatsoever and vote no, it's going to cost the town's hundred and thirty-four point three million to get started. We know that that's going to go well over that figure. If we wait five, five years and try it again, are we looking at another forty, fifty million dollars added to today's figures? Probably with what's going on today. Who knows? Thirty-year bond, uh, bond, forty-four percent interest. You can't go to the bank and borrow that kind of money. And a, a, a loan on a new car is four point nine nine, and that's pretty cheap. You can get more money for that. Someone mentioned that Selectmen Gaspard, eight hundred dollars, eight hundred thousand dollar home, it's going to cost you about eleven hundred dollars in additional taxes. Someone at the last meeting was saying that they worried about paying twelve hundred dollars in taxes. Well, I guess their home is worth more than eight hundred thousand dollars. I don't know. Anyway. Selectmen Gaspard mentioned that we treat Old Colony as our high school, and we should because it has been for fifty years. It's served our community as well. Well, we should look at it as a high school as well. And let's not put Band-Aids on trying to repair the facility. Let's look at straight forward and get a new school, a new building, receive the tax credits that we can receive and move forward. One thing that I thought was very nice is, last meeting, Selectmen Gaspard mentioned that the things that really get their's hot are little children and the seniors. Well, the little children are today's children and tomorrow's children going to Old Colony. We have no other high school. Sure, we have a number of seats in Fairhaven and I believe New Bedford, but they're limited. As I was writing up my notes, and I'm trying to keep this brief, yesterday, I realized that I'm a senior citizen as well. So I'm glad he has me in his heart. It means a lot to me. So just to keep it short, it's late. I'm asking for the vote of the town of Akushnet to move forward with this project. I'm asking for the communities that are with us in this project to move forward. And let's figure out a way of how we're going to pay for it. We've been going, we've been chasing, like a little dog chasing his tail, running around and around. Who's going to pay for this? Who's going to pay for that? Well, think about fifty-plus years ago when they had the same scenario. We need to come up with some initiatives as to how to get more money into the towns, all towns. I don't know if the towns collaborate with each other and discuss these matters, but maybe now is the time that they need to do this. And maybe now is the time that need to address the state department. We know the federal, federal government is, Selectmen Gaspard said is out of control.
Has been, has been for decades.
It has. We can't wait another five, ten years and see, well, you know, we spent a hundred and thirty-five million dollars, maybe a hundred and fifty million dollars by then, at a school that's fifty, sixty, seventy years old now, and it's falling apart. So I think we need a yes vote. We need to forge forward for our children and our children's children. Thank you very much.
So we're just, so consistent, there were a couple of things. The Upper Cape project was a hundred and twenty-eight million, not one hundred and eighty-eight million. So I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, I thought, you know, I was happy to hear because no one was talking.
Fair enough. I just wanted people to understand.
I'm a little, at this age, stage of the game, believe it or not, I'm a little hard of feeling.
Sometimes that can be a good thing.
What?
That can be a good thing.
This is true. Anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate you listening.
Anything else? All right?
May I make just one comment?
Sure.
On behalf of the Building Committee, your time has been gracious, has had us in a few times. I don't want anything to be perceived as though this is adversarial. The comment before that was made is you need to be informed to make a decision. And that's what this is all about. You know, we may not always agree, but it is the notion of being informed so you can make the best decision for yourself. So on behalf of the Building Committee, I thank you for allowing us to, to come here, to be receptive to asking difficult questions because it's a difficult, I remember sitting with FIMCON, the budget planning last year and talking about budgets is difficult. And we tried to accommodate and we, and we believe we did accommodate. So it's always a collaborative effort, but again, everybody does what's best as long as they're informed and make the, an informed decision. So thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. You said it best. And it is the people's decision, right? You need to get that out, message out, regardless how you feel, one way or another, cast your vote. It's the only way it matters. The one thing that I don't want to hear from people is we didn't hear it. We didn't know anything about it. That message needs to get pushed around. How we do that at a faster pace with one week left to go. I, I talked about putting it up on the signs if anybody's driving around with their eyes open. Hopefully they'll see that stuff, right? But I will say this to you, Shirley, I've known you for a long, long time, and I've worked with that woman for, for quite a while. We've always worked really well together. We've, we've had our, you know, debates back and forth when it comes to budget discussions back in the day. But I can tell you this, regardless of the outcome, we're going to figure it out one way or another. We will figure it out, right? You know, we get a lot of smart people in the town of Akushnet. I'm sure that all the other member towns have a lot of smart people as well. So regardless of if, if, how this comes out, we'll figure out, you know, a way of making the school, making the school a better place.
I hope so, Kevin, because we owe it to Ashley to figure it out.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Let's move the paper.
Finance Committee motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call the fair.
Aye.